Okay, welcome to those that are joined us from home as well as those that have joined us here in City Council. This is a meeting of the Pecosin City Council for Monday, September 10th. A lot of things on the agenda, but before I even start the meeting, we're going to modify the agenda because of special circumstances as a storm approaches the city of Pecosin. So Buddy, I'll take a motion if you've got one.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move that we modify our agenda in that under special presentations, we change the order and make number one, an update by Deputy Chief Michael Bryant on Hurricane Florence, and under new business, we add number two, declaration of state of emergency for the city of Pecosin.
Second. Okay, motion made. And secondly, that we modify the agenda to add the discussion on the storm and a declaration of emergency, of local emergency, under new business. Evie, please.
Yes, sir. Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
Aye.
Councilman Vanello?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven zero.
Okay. If we could all please rise, I'll lead you in the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for the many blessings that we've received within our city. As bad weather approaches, we ask for your help and guidance, that we do the right things to protect our citizens, that you ask for your blessing on our public safety employees as they try to serve those in need, as well as our military and our state and federal employees as they all do the same things in service to others. We ask for a portion of your wisdom as we move forward on the various issues in front of us this evening, and we do all that in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. The Communities to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, so with the modified agenda, we're under special presentations, and Assistant Chief Bryant, if you can come up and brief us on storm preps and governor's declaration as you understand it this evening, and basically try to keep our citizens up to speed with where the city is and what our plans ahead are.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Wheeler, wish I was here under better circumstances, but the weather is the weather, so we have to address that. I'm gonna be kind of going back and forth with material. I did get an update this evening about Hurricane Florence, and as of now, Hurricane Florence is about a hundred and, let's see, I'm sorry, 1,170 miles east, southeast of Cape Fear, North Carolina. Hurricane Florence is moving toward the west, northwest, at 13 miles per hour. Maximum sustained winds have increased to near 140, 140 miles an hour with higher gusts. Florence is now a category four hurricane, and it's possible it could become a hurricane, a category five hurricane before this is all done. The hurricane-force winds extend outward up to 40 miles. From the center, tropical storm-force winds extend outward up to 150 miles. There are interests at the coast inland from South Carolina into the mid-Atlantic region. We should closely monitor the progress of Florence with anticipation of landfall late Wednesday, early Thursday. That's pretty much the gist of the storm at this point. Anybody has any questions at this point, I'll be more than happy to answer.
One thing to discuss, I think, obviously, most people are gonna be, in Pecosin, are gonna be concerned about tides. If you have any information on tidal expectations, it's early, and then we'll try and clarify whatever.
Okay. At this point, it's really unknown how the tides are gonna be. The storm is still 1,100 miles out there. They are saying that we will get tidal, we will have tidal issues, it's just the amount of tide, we just don't know at this point, or the National Weather Service has not said. I know there's been some reference to Isabel, but to give a certain water height, we don't have that.
Just tidal expectations, as we understand them are unknown right now.
Yes, sir. They are unknown.
That's fair.
Michael, in the five o'clock briefing that we got, that you shared with me via text message, for the first time in the run-up briefs, they began to specifically address, although not in great detail, not without quantification, tidal flooding. And so the general brief today said for the first time, expect moderate to major. Now, they didn't say where.
Right, they did not.
In Pecosin, the difference between a barely major and a true major flood is significant, so we don't have as much information as we wish we had as it changes, but, you know, I think it would be appropriate for people to prepare for tropical storm-force winds probably coming around midnight or so on Wednesday evening, so that would be Wednesday into Thursday. And though the tide information is not yet known, we do expect a coastal flooding component to this storm, which could range from what we've seen today, from somewhere in the moderate range to major. We don't have more information than that at this point. We'll post more when we have it. We've been posting the briefing sheets when we get them from the National Weather Service. And Michael, in your comments, did you touch on the governor's declaration?
I have not.
But you're going to?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This evening, the governor did declare evacuation of Zone A, which is primarily a lot of Pecosin effective at 8:00 AM tomorrow morning. And I don't know, Randy, if you want to talk anymore about that, but that's what I know about the evacuation.
Okay, alright, thanks. I'm gonna make, as one of the council people that have been here through several storms, I'll tell you, this is the earliest we've seen a declaration, a governor's declaration of a mandatory evacuation, okay? It is what it is, and it's well thought out by the governor and his staff. Takes 72 hours or so to evacuate the peninsula area. They're trying to give people a strong warning that this is a very serious storm, not to be taken lightly, and that they're sending the very clear signals of that when they say mandatory evacuation. So I want to make sure that everybody in Pecosin understands what is available to them when we, when that goes into effect in the morning. And Randy, here, here I can use your backup for that. But one of the things that is open now, and will be open, is Langley Speedway. That is to move your vehicles to higher ground, okay? That is, they have been a great partner to the city of Pecosin. I encourage all people here that are in low-lying areas or they're concerned about their property to move it there. And we will work out the logistics of if there needs to be any type of coverage up there, but we cannot guarantee anything, but what we can guarantee is it's higher ground, and it's not going to be in the way of other services that we may have to supply. Parking here is probably the first thing that fills up. We'll see a rush to the highest grounds in Pecosin. We encourage people to stay away from, do not park your vehicles in shopping centers where we will need people to be able to access for the next several days to prep for the storm, as well as emergencies during the storm, and we'll work with them on that. The second thing is a mandatory evacuation means that normally that shelters will be open. We're checking on that. It is so early after that mandatory evacuation declaration that we are unclear, but one of the evacuation centers for the city of Pecosin is TAB High School. So at worst case, continue to call us. Couple contact numbers, Randy, I'll let you go through those, but I'm gonna go into a definition of what mandatory evacuation means for the city of Pecosin. Mandatory evacuation is just that. It basically says, the governor is saying you need to leave your home if you are in Zone A, not in Zone B, but in Zone A, you need to leave your home and make preparations to do that. So that starts to immediately go down the list of questions that most people will start to ask. Is the city of Pecosin going to stop me from getting back to my home? I would tell you, at this point in time, we will not. I'm not saying that that's going to be the case all the way through the storm, but today we are not going to prevent you from getting back to your home. It does, however, mean that it is a serious storm, and that our services to you, if you decide to stay, we are not going to necessarily send our fire department or our police department to your home during the height of a storm to render any services, because it is a danger to them as well as yourself for staying there. I know that people in Pecosin who I trust, who I've, who have been through many storms themselves, and many of which are smarter than I am about them, come to the understanding of what is within the realm, but that is what mandatory means. You should leave, we encourage you to leave, and follow the governor's order. Is the city of Pecosin gonna prevent you from getting back to your house? No, not at this point. There may come a time when we in fact would do that. Now, five days before, four days before, three days before is not that time. Simply, you may forget something and have to go back and get it. So I'm just gonna leave it at that. Tropical storm-force winds in the city of Pecosin with saturated grounds, which we've all had a lot of heavy rainfall, you've had some high tides that we have experienced, it is scary, and a lot of people think it's associated with this storm. It is not. They, it was associated with other storm systems, but it does create a risk, right? You've got saturated grounds and tropical storm-force winds approaching as early as Wednesday, which means that potentially trees and things like that are at risk. So I want to make sure that everybody understands what we do. The other thing is that information, get it from the city website. It'll be posted out there regular, along with the updates from the National Weather Service. You can always go to the National Hurricane Zones themselves to keep up with the storm. I'm sure that everybody that I'm talking to right now is checking on that weather in one way or another. Continue to stay posted, and watch out for your persons, your property. If you have those that have special needs, such as elderly on oxygen, special needs children, I highly encourage you to take this time to get out of the path of that storm, okay? Those are the things that we, it's about knowing your surroundings and knowing what you, what you've got. This storm can change tracks, as we all know, good or bad, and simply in four hours. Now, that's why they track it every four hours and let you know its current track. It is a serious storm, category four is serious damage, it's not to be taken lightly. We are not taking it lightly, but we are also not going to go into full panic mode here at the city until we get to, we will be basically very strategic in when we start to do things, and I trust that our staff and that our Public Works employees who have been through these storms with the citizens of Pecosin, we all kind of have our expectations aligned. We're pretty good at this. Let's stay good at this and stay communicative and not overreact or underreact. Just stay aligned with us so that you can make the right decisions for you and your family. Randy, telephone where they can get information between the hours of nine and five until we stand up emergency centers?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'll answer that and answer a couple other things.
Okay.
Answer your question first. For folks that would like additional information during the standard business day, please call City Manager's Office, 868-3000. As we get closer to the actual event impacting us, should we begin to see kind of anticipated worsening conditions on the ground, we often do set up a 24-hour line. We either use, continue to use 868-3000, or we will message out through our website and social media an alternate phone number. Additionally, just as a reference, Graham told me this right before we sat back down, was some question of how many citizens approximately in Hampton Roads were affected by this. It's not just a Pecosin issue. About 250, slightly less than 250,000 people live in Zone A, just as a point of fact. We do anticipate shelter information tomorrow. York County is our sheltering partner, spoke with the county administrator there literally right before we sat down. They're working through that. We had already been in pre-planning with them earlier in the week. If someone is at home and they don't know what their zone is, they should have on the city trash can a sticker which says either A or B. That's a good indication of what your zone is. If you didn't take notice of that sticker, that's what that is, but for any reason that doesn't work for you. Tried this myself to make sure that it would work today. Just type in in your browser, know your zone, Virginia, and right when it comes up, it'll give you an option right on the front page to type in your specific address, and it'll tell you what your, what your zone number is. That's all I have, sir.
Okay. And you will hear us up here, go ahead, and you've already heard Councilman Green talk about amending the agenda to add a declaration of local emergency. That is a measure that allows us to tap into other services that we may require from the state and other governments for any assistance. So that is a, is a measure that's preemptive and not saying that we'll need it or not need it, but we're gonna be prepared, just like we're asking everybody else to be prepared. Counsel, did I miss anything? Okay. All right. Moving away from the storm, which I'd like to do, under special presentations this evening, the second item is a discussion from the Peninsula Agency on Aging. Mr. Massey is here as the CEO of that agency, and sir, the microphone is yours, and we appreciate you being here this evening.
Mayor Hunt, thank you so much for the invitation, members of the City Council, Mr. Wheeler. It's a privilege to come and share some information about the Peninsula Agency on Aging, the work we do in Pecosin, in this community. Before we get started, and not being a resident of Pecosin, I would never be presumptuous enough to introduce the two people I would like to recognize, but I would like to recognize them. And first is Pat Green, which I'm sure everyone in the room knows Pat, and Pat's about three weeks shy of finishing two, three-year terms, or six years, on the Board of Directors for Peninsula Agency on Aging, and I assure you, she's represented you very, very well. Pat may not know it, but some of the earlier board members, and she may, of course, but a couple come to mind, A.C. Watkins, which many of you may remember, and Aldridge Shim Forrest was also a Pecosin representative. So Pat has continued in that strong tradition of speaking her mind and helping provide good guidance to the Board of Directors and staff at Peninsula Agency on Aging. The other individual is Gerald Pageal III, right Gerald? And Gerald is, of course, lifelong resident of Pecosin, and he's also our Vice President for Community Services at PAA. And on a very serious note, Gerald, in his portfolio, he oversees our transportation services, and we have about 25 vehicles, most of which are wheelchair lift-equipped, and Randy, you guys may want to keep that in mind, particularly before, if the storm comes and we have high winds, our high-profile vehicles aren't of much use, but early on, we can, I think, be of help to you if there are individuals who utilize wheelchairs or have oxygen equipment and need to be moved to other locations, so we'd be glad to serve in that capacity. Let me take a few minutes, if I may, and direct your attention, there's a folder that I provided with some handouts. On the right side is a copy of our 2017 annual report. As you all know, we haven't quite completed fiscal 2018 yet, so that's the last full year of information, and also our brochure that reviews all, most of the services that are provided by PAA. So that's just for future reference, if I may. On the left side of the folder is a two-page report that I would like to review and share a little bit of information in depth from that. Our mission as the Area Agency on Aging is to support the independence and quality of life of peninsula residents, primarily 60 and over, by advocating, arranging, and providing vital human services. The Peninsula Agency on Aging is what's known as an Area Agency on Aging, and these, we're one of some 620 agencies that serve the entire nation. Every planning service area, every jurisdiction in the country has resources that can be provided or provided through the Area Agency on Aging. And then the Virginia Department for the Aging and Rehabilitation Services actually manages, provides oversight for the work we do locally. The federal funds come down from the Old Americans Act to the folks in Richmond, we contract with them, and then they oversee the work we do with those resources. We have a lot of other resources that we have worked hard to leverage in addition to the federal state funding. We have been pretty successful in bringing in resources from foundations in our area, other funders, and also in working with health systems and health plans to provide services such as care coordination and care transition interventions, helping individuals, patients come home from the hospital and have a successful transition back to the home setting without having the unsuccessful option of bouncing right back into the hospital. In many cases, folks are back in in a matter of days, and that's a great expense to the health system, to taxpayers, and we can provide what's known as a social determinants of health in many of these cases. If a person goes home, they don't have AC in the summer, heat in the winter, they don't have food in the refrigerator, they don't have transportation to get their medication, their chances of having a successful outcome from good clinical care is diminished, and we, I know, play a very important role in helping, I think, level out that equation so that folks can have a successful quality of life back home. On the left side of the folder, this is the document I was referring to, there's a list of services that are provided, some I think you're probably familiar with, many you may not be familiar with, that are part of the work that we do in the community. Home-delivered meals, or meals on wheels, I think everyone is familiar and they understand. That's probably the easiest sell that we have. If we have folks who don't understand what the purpose of meals on wheels is, we have a lot of work to do, so I think we're good there. Adult daycare respite, and this is targeted not just to the older individual who may need some support during the day, but also to help the family caregiver, who in many cases is carrying the load of caregiving and working a job, and maybe have younger kids to look out for also, so that's a way to give them some support. Advanced care planning, helping individuals understand the importance of advanced directives and having that in place so that you, we are actually in charge of what happens with our healthcare moving forward, and you're not at the mercy of someone who decides you should have some care that you really would not have wanted had you been able to make that decision. Care coordination, we have care coordinators who work with family caregivers and seniors to help them assess the deeds that they have, and then we work to bring the resources in place like home care, transportation, meals on wheels, to help them have a successful outcome there. I won't go through everything on that list, but you can, if you would just take a quick look down. One other, the Congress Dining Program, we have a dining center here in Pecosin, and we really, Gerald I know has worked hard, and Pat has worked hard, and others, to try to recruit individuals to come and be a part of that senior center, Congress Dining Program. I would encourage those of you here tonight, and I know we have a broader audience, and that's really good, so we can get the word out, it's an opportunity to come and participate in activities, socialize, get a good deal, and I think it's important to quality of life, particularly for individuals who live alone. At the bottom of that list, the community programs, one, the matter of balance, you know, falls are the cause of so many health problems. I think falls probably, particularly if there's a broken bone, broken hip, or whatever, you tend to decline much more rapidly than if you're able to avoid falls in our later years. So we work with individuals to help them understand how important maintaining good balance and avoiding falls is. Chronic disease self-management programs, we help individuals learn how to manage chronic conditions, particularly diabetes, and avoid a lot of really serious conditions that would not develop if they understood better how to care for themselves. The second page there, and I understand we're gonna move it along, I told Pat I would be brief, and she said, be brief, but don't be too brief, so I'm trying to strike that balance with you. The second page gives some specific figures on some of the services. This is not a total listing, but it gives you a flavor, I think. We have 10 seniors in Pecosin that, over the last year, that received home-delivered meals. Some, 1,470 meals were delivered there. At the senior dining center, we served 15 seniors, and 729 meals were served there. 11 seniors were provided transportation over the year, and overall, we served 81 seniors in the city of Pecosin in fiscal 2017. So my message is multifaceted, I guess, but the really bottom line I wanted to convey to the City Council tonight and to those who are viewing the proceedings here is that we have resources, we have capacity that is not being utilized to its fullest, and I would encourage folks in the city of Pecosin, family caregivers, seniors who could use a hand, hand up to help them along. It's not a handout, it really isn't welfare, if you will. It's a way to help a person maintain independence and a good quality of life, and sometimes we just need a little help to get us there, and that's what we're really all about. So I thank you for the opportunity to come and share with you tonight, and I know the gravity of the situation this evening, so I'm gonna stop there. Of course, I would entertain questions, but Mayor Hunt, I know that's your purview as to whether you allow that or not, so.
Oh, no, no, absolutely. I would, I would say, Mr. Massey, that, one, we appreciate you being here and being an advocate for the Agency on Aging, and I think you said it best right there when you said that this isn't a handout system, this is a system to help improve your quality of life and to maintain your quality of life.
Absolutely, yes.
I would offer to you, Randy, that, and something that we may want to facilitate, is somewhat of a recording of these types of services that we put on our channel so that you don't feel like, once a year, you get to come here and say what the Peninsula Agency on Aging provides to the citizens of Pecosin. It's underutilized, great messages, why don't we get those out for you, help you get those out to our seniors, of which I guess I'll be joining y'all in another year or so, so...
I have a staff member who really is very knowledgeable in social media and so forth, and would be delighted to work with city staff to help accomplish that.
You know, I can't say enough about improving the quality of life of any citizen, so this is just another way to do it. I have to admit that I was a little bit surprised that you said that Pat Green was outspoken and a strong advocate.
I know, I know she is, she is three weeks ago on my board, but I had to tell you anyways.
Oh, I'm telling you.
Thank you very much.
I just hope she doesn't do what she does to me. If you don't speak briefly enough to suit her, she'll smack you in the back of the head.
Well, I'll find out a minute, I guess.
And I don't want to overlook Gerald either. I know that Gerald's worked a lot of years on transportation needs. I think meals on wheels, at one time, that was one of your four... I think Meals on Wheels at one time, that was one of your four tastes. But the bottom line is, two great advocates that you can reach anywhere, see them around Pecosin, and say, ask them what's available to help you out. But we appreciate you coming, and please take me up on the offer to spread that word.
We will.
Okay?
Thank you.
You didn't mention there's no fee for any.
And Mayor, if we could, on the website, maybe get the contact number with just a short list of their services so people would know where to call.
Absolutely.
Put it on our website.
Absolutely. So we'll help you get that message out. What I heard clearly was there's no fees for any of these services.
You got that message.
I got that message. It comes back to that outspoken thing that we were talking about. Okay, thank you very much. All right, close my agenda here, so give me one second. All right, the next item under special presentations is always an introduction of new employees. Make it clear that the city of Pecosin is going through some transition, time of turnover, and we look forward to these, and so that people at home can put a face with a name when they see them out there at the Food Lion Store now.
Absolutely. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, I'd like to introduce Linda Alshire. She comes from us for 42 years of experience from the city of Newport News. Yes, I stole her from Newport News. But she is a retired employee. She came to us to do the same job that she basically was doing with less stress. She had, you know, four employees, five employees at one time she supervised. Now she just wants to be kind of told what to do, and I'm glad to have her. She, of course, has been married for 41 years to Carl. She has two daughters and three grandchildren, and I am super excited to be working with her again. I'm super excited to be here.
You want to introduce yourself to us?
I'm Linda Alshire. And basically, she said it all, pretty much, but I'm very happy to be here and serving the citizens of Pecosin. Seems like I might have come at a bad time with the bad storm, but, you know, I'll be here to help.
That's all right. Just sign yourself up for voluntary service there with the fire chief. He'll put you to work. You know, we multitask around here, so it's going to be okay, but welcome.
Thank you so much.
Welcome, and we look forward to seeing you in the halls around here.
Look forward to seeing you all. Thank you.
Okay, council, time for approval of the minutes. Somebody prepared with a motion?
[inaudible]
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. I see staff out there, so I skipped right through it. If anybody would like to address council on any issue, now is that time. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors, and now I'll ask council for approval of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of our regular session of August 27, 2018.
Second. Okay, motion made, and second, that we approve the regular session of August 27. Evie, please.
Certainly. Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Ah.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Canelle.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried of a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, and the work session?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of our work session of the same day.
Second. The motion made, and second, that we approve those also. Evie, please.
Certainly. Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Canelle.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Ah.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Now we're under the section of new business, where we have two items after the amended agenda. The first is a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a grant application for a custom Type III ambulance with Stryker Stretcher. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, if it's okay with you, I'd like to recognize the fire chief, who may in turn want to recognize Battalion Chief Young, and I would say that anytime you're authorizing me to submit a grant, it's because people like John, or Joe, or Michael, or Robert have done an extraordinary amount of work, and my job is to read it, make sure there was no obvious misspellings, and sign it. So they really do more than 99% of the work. But John, you want to come up briefly and summarize what this is and why we're asking for it today?
Always like to see the chief, too, you know, I knew you were.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Wheeler. We're here looking for your support to push forward with this grant project to replace the oldest medic unit in our fleet currently. And essentially, we're trying to get ahead of the game. The city manager and the fire chief had discussed that this is a good project for FY20, but if we apply for this grant round, we would be awarded the money January 1, 2019, but we have until the end of 2019 to spend it. So day one of FY20, we would have access to this money if we put in for the grant cycle now and get ahead of it. The unit that we're trying to replace is 21 years old currently. Rechassing is really not an option when the patient compartment is that old, so a purchase of a new unit would be most beneficial. In 2015, the regulations for patient restraint in the back of an ambulance changed. This unit would be the first one that we would have that would meet the newest requirements by the federal government for patient safety and provider safety in the event of a rollover ambulance auto accident. The estimated cost would be $220,000 for the ambulance and the stretcher combined as a package. The grant that we're looking for would be a 50% match from the city, and the volunteer rescue squad is currently working on a fundraiser, so by pushing this back to FY20, we're going to give them some time to try to raise funds to assist with our 50% match. Currently, they have $10,000, but they just started this fund drive, and I'm happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Any questions, council? Okay, let me say that I appreciate the work that you did in writing any grant, right? It's time away from your primary task of doing your day job, but it is so vital in the way that you're thinking ahead. I'd just love to hear things like, "We're thinking ahead to 2020, and we're doing it now." Those are all the things that make me realize what a great city staff that we have. So thank you for doing that. Thank you for writing the grant application in the first place and being successful on writing many grant applications as the fire department. People do not realize how much money you guys have raised through this process.
We've had a great deal of pride.
Yes, you've done a great job.
In obtaining those grants.
Got you. Okay, so thank you. Counselors, are there a motion that we move forward with us?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a grant application for a custom Type III ambulance with Stryker Stretcher.
Second. Okay, motion made, second. Questions of council? Seeing none, Evie, please.
Certainly. Councilman Canelle.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Ah.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, and the second item under new business is what we added at the beginning, a declaration of emergency, a local emergency for the approach of Hurricane Florence. Okay, no hurricane. No hurricane. Is there a motion to move forward with this declaration?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution declaring a local state of emergency for the city of Pecosin due to Hurricane Florence.
Second. Okay, motion made, and second, that we approve this resolution. Questions or comments of council? Seeing none, Evie?
Certainly. Excuse me, Councilman Canelle.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Council, Vice Mayor Freeman.
Ah.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, and hopefully we have retained the viewership, because this next item is the comments of the city manager, and I'd asked Randy a couple weeks back with the changes in world, basically in the world of trade and all those things, starting to affect our recycling services, and I wanted to give Randy some time to brief our citizens. And Randy, I would think that, very similar to the Agency on Aging, this is something that we may want to figure out how to put out there and have it kind of repetitive. Okay?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Council members, you'll find as part of the written materials for this evening, slightly more than one-page memorandum from me, which sought to summarize where we were on this issue up through today, and I will provide a brief update on my meeting earlier today, which is referenced. Essentially, there are a number of things happening in the recycling world. Countries like China, China most specifically, that were very significant portions of the worldwide recycling materials market have begun to implement changes on quality. They have begun to ban certain, or no longer take, certain recyclables, and the net effect of that and changes that ripple out from it is that the revenue portion of the model of recycling is in flux. And while I think ultimately, long-term, the markets will respond, in the short term, in the foreseeable midterm, that's not beginning to happen yet. Citizens who might be interested to know, a reminder to council, that at present, the city pays through its contract, through its association with VIPSa, $1.58 per month for, per household for recycling. Well, clearly, it costs more money than $1.58, or $1.58, excuse me, per month, and what the recycler takes the recycled material, processes it, and then resells it. That's where the, that's where the lion's share of their revenue in a contract like that comes from, or an important part of it. As the commodity prices and in limited recyclables, actually, markets are sort of ceasing to exist or freezing up, the amount of revenue that is available to a recycler for some of these significant items, for example, mixed paper a year ago was $96 a ton, and now, recently, it was two. I heard today it was up to 20. So all of that has sort of put the municipal and curbside recycling market in flux, not just here, but just generally. We are looking at the prospect of a significant increase when we rebid our current contract, which is a five-year contract which expires this fiscal year, so we've got 10 months or so to go. VIPSa has estimated that we may need to plan for a household recycling rate per household of, in the neighborhood of $5. It's not inconceivable that it might be even slightly more than that. What's happened, what's already made that bad situation even more difficult is that our current contractor, which is County Waste, that provides service through VIPSa, curbside recycling, to ourselves, James City, Williamsburg, and York County, has put us collectively on notice that they intend to cease providing recycling services under the current contract effective the end of November. We are in, through VIPSa, in consultation with the VIPSa legal counsel on this issue, and the board met today, and both Tom Jones and myself represented the city at the VIPSa Board today, and we discussed the upcoming, the contract I said is expiring this fiscal year, so there is already a new RFP on the street. In about two weeks, a little more than two weeks, responses will come back. We may be able to accelerate, meaning start sooner, the new contract. We may find ultimately that we may wish to, and need to, renegotiate a short-term fix to the current contract to get us to the end of the fiscal year, and certainly, as I said, we're in consultation with legal counsel from VIPSa regarding other options that I'm really not at liberty to discuss. So all of that, if you take it all together, even if we find a way, and I'm confident we will, find a way in the short term to get from the end of November to the end of the fiscal year. But I think we can plan on our costs being significantly higher per household than they have been, and it is possible, although, don't know yet, that the new contract may not take exactly the same types of recyclables that our current one does, and absent a type of contract that is sustainable and acceptable, we may even need to look down the line at changing the manner in which recycling is collected. There's no extra words behind that, it's just the idea that the market is shifting, and what we're doing and what we're paying for it is going to be shifting with it. And know that all four of those localities through VIPS, as well as Mr. Jones and myself, are giving as much attention as we can when the storm's not coming up, so. But we, once we get on the other side of the September 26 RFP process, I have a very good sense of what our next steps may look like, and I'll be back to brief the council and let you know how things are going.
Okay.
In the short run, not that we want to do this, but if we do have a bit of a financial shock to the budget, this fund does carry a small fund balance for that, you know, for one of these express purposes. What if something suddenly goes significantly wrong? So again, the council's forethought in maintaining appropriate balances and funds will make something that's very serious not be a short-term fiscal crisis for us.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll step a little bit out of order and allow council, if y'all have some questions of Randy after his presentation, before your comments, we're fine to do that.
Randy, just one thing, if you don't know, that's fine, but what do we pay per ton for trash collection and disposal? I do not know off the top of my head. Tanya, do you? Significantly more than $1.53 per household.
Six to seven dollars per ton.
And the only reason I ask is that could come into play. Yes, sir. If the recycle rate gets equal to that or more, then I think we've got to look seriously at it.
Hard decisions to make.
Yes, sir. Concur.
Okay, so Randy, one, I appreciate you being in front of this, just like the fire department was here about the events, that we're in front of this, but we're also not going to let it pop up and surprise people, so I wanted Randy to let the public know what we're up against, so world dynamics, world markets are changing, and they may change in our favor, they may change and make it worse. But regardless, you're looking at a potential, council would be looking at a potential up to five times as much as it costs today, and so lots of decisions to be made, and just basically want people to tune in and be aware of what's going on out there, because world markets do affect you, you know, and in particular, this one does. And certainly, I didn't realize it was only $1.58 per household, but that was shocking, and then it would, everything else was made up by the marketing of those products for sale. And with that gone, it makes it a whole lot very difficult if it's not truly being recycled. A lot of people don't know where their recycling goes, so thanks for that brief, and we'll keep everybody up to speed. Again, Randy, I'd like you to kind of put that out on some type of recurring message, just that short brief as to what's going on, as well as any time you update council on it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, council directives. Bud?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank everyone involved with our new comprehensive plan for the fine work that they have done, including the citizens of Pecosin, for their comments. They did a very thorough and a nice job on that, and they've done a lot of work. I'd also like to welcome our new employee, Linda, and I will not try to destroy her last name by pronouncing it, but welcome her to the city of Pecosin.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Ditto what Bud said. And I'd also want to mention, in case you didn't tune in for the work session, there will be a public hearing on how will be a public hearing on the comprehensive plan at our next meeting, so, and that is available on the city's website if you want to read it and come and comment about it. That's open to you. And also, I wanted to commend our city staff. They write an incredible amount of grants, because, you know, we operate on a limited budget and just can't afford everything that we would like to have, and I'm just so impressed by the amount of grants and the amount of equipment, especially our fire department, police department have gotten, and that's all extra hours for those guys, so kudos to them. And our family motto is, because I enforce it on my family, is plan for the worst, but hope for the best. So, I would encourage our citizens to plan for this storm in that regard, because it's much better to plan and not need it than it is to need it and not have planned. So, it never hurts to be prepared and be planned and then hope that we don't get hard effects from it, so that's all.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for the reminder on the public hearing. Vice Mayor?
Nothing additional. I concur with Councilwoman Andrews.
Okay. Councilman Hux?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regard to the new signs at Amory's Wharf that we discussed a few weeks ago, I noticed that those signs have now been installed, so thank you very much to all involved who supported that effort, and I'm looking forward to getting feedback from the police department late this year to see if those signs produce the desired effects.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Green?
Just one thing, Mr. Mayor, just to make the staff aware and the city manager, we have, from our last food distribution, frozen meat and non-perishable food leftover, that if there are people that cannot get out to get to the grocery store and they need food, I'll be happy to go down there and pick it up and take it to them, so if you hear of somebody that needs that, I'll be glad to do it.
Thank you. Councilman Canelo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just piggyback on, you know, everything everybody else said, and just, you know, encourage citizens to stay on top of the news and follow closely to what we put out as a city and certainly what the state's putting out, and certainly, you know, utilize your resources. Call the city manager's office, call us, you know, we are your resource, so don't hesitate but pick up the fast.
Okay. And Councilwoman Canelo reminded me that we talked about Zone A mandatory evacuation. Zone B is not included yet, but if you're in Zone B, obviously, you need to continue to watch. We are, as a council, we may make a change, but right now, Zone B is not under mandatory evacuation. Again, one thing that city staff did do for the citizens is make it very easy to find your zone. It's on your trash can at home, well-thought-out, planned. It's just a little sticker on there, it'll say A or B. That is your evac zone, so it's easy enough. You don't have to go on any website, you don't have to go anything, just except for, go out there, take the nice kitchen trash out, and take a look, and say, "What is my hurricane evacuation zone?" Very easy to get. So, thank you for the staff members who thought of that as well, Randy. I have nothing else to add. We will continue to be communicative as far as the approach of this storm. Please don't hesitate to call and ask. That would be the only mistake you could make, is not calling and asking, and I know that staff will make every effort to make your, make the answer known. We know it, or even if we don't know it, we will try to find out and get back to you. So, don't be out there and don't worry yourselves to death, okay? There's nothing anybody can do about this storm approaching. We can't change the trajectory. We can do what Councilwoman Andrews suggested, that we plan, that we communicate, and that we support each other, and then we'll just have to hope that it goes further south. Okay? So, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Mayor. Second.
Okay, Evie, please.
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried with a vote of seven to nothing.
Very good, very good, and we are adjourned.